So, welcome everyone to the IMC Town Hall Meeting, dealing with racial and social injustices and equity, teaching us how to learn and do and be, is my takeaway from all of these meetings, to learn, do and be. And with me today, I have several people from the IMC Board. My name is Tanya Reiskind, and I am currently the co-head of Newgate School, the Lab School for the Montessori Foundation, sitting in for Kathy Leach. And with me today is Jonathan Wolf, an IMC Board member, and Sarah Lavalley-McArthur, correct? Our trusted IT support system and contributor facilitator, and our lead facilitator and guide, Dr. Cindy Acker, who I went over to. Little logistics. If you need to or want to comment, please feel free to raise your electronic hand or your hand. We will keep, try to keep track of you. Also, please feel free to use the chat. The chat section will have the agenda will be in it. And we, that's our place where we put important links and resources. So, welcome and welcome Cindy, thank you.
Absolutely. We're going to start with a moment of silence as we generally do. But it is going to be reflective of the same thing that I mentioned last week. Because we, we have, people in the United States have one week about before election. And so, we're hoping for peace. There has just been a lot of upset recently. And so, there's, there's a need for peace. There's a need for reconciliation. There's a need for righteous justice. There's a need for understanding. And so, with that, we start our moment of silence. Thank you. Are there any people who were not here last week? If you can raise your hand or electronic hand. One, two. How many do you see?
Electronic hands, I see one, two.
It's like about five or six.
Is it two, Tanya?
Yeah, I have two electronic hands and three real hands. About five or six people is correct.
Okay. Five or six, okay. So, is there someone who was on last week who can give us a snippet of what you remember from last week? How you, because I think we need to just review it for a moment before we go forward.
Last week, we talked about what it feels, what it feels like, what it means to be white. And it was uncomfortable. And it was hard to even put into words to describe what it was and to describe how it felt. And I think, for me, one of the most overwhelming things was realizing that I didn't know what it felt like or meant to be white, because I never had to think about it. And that is a privilege, to not have to be concerned about how my race, how people view me because of my race, except to recognize that, you know, maybe those people of color view me as the privileged one.
Thank you Kitty. Anyone else? So, we talked a little bit about how the construct of race took place near the end, because we had a lot of comments to that, to that question. And does anybody remember? Can they, can they share out? What do you recall about how white was created?
Well, with some of it coming from the colonialism and the Enlightenment, and the idea that in order to sort of justify taking humans from Africa to be able to incorporate slavery as a rational quote methodology in order to it was using that reason, that rationale of a race separateness and difference in order to justify doing it. And yet, it, the idea of race was not part of human consciousness until that time. So, it's how it sort of explained how race is a construct.
I was surprised to learn about Linnaeus categorizing not only plants but people. I had, I just thought about categorizing plants. And I was surprised to learn that it extended to people and races too.
And so, if you remember at the very end, what I mentioned to everyone is that something happened also to other people besides people who were Africans, who were enslaved and brought to the United States, that there were casualties that occurred. And white people became the casualty as black people became the victim. And that what, what occurred is that there was a loss of ethnicity and culture that ended up having people boiled down to being considered white. So, I'm curious if we can just go through, who can share, what do you know about your culture? Where do you, where does your family originate? Or the combinations of that, who knows? And how much of it has influenced your culture in your home? Sarah, has your hand up?
Yeah, well, I, my family has always, from my father's side and my mother's side, goes back to Scotland, Ireland, the Celtic regions. And that, that has absolutely represented itself in my family. There's a book on, two books on my shelf on Scottish heritage. My bagpipes are played at every funeral and wedding. And kilts are worn as a, as a nod with the MacArthur tartan on it. And there's a pride in that. There's a feeling of connection. And when I went back to Scotland in the early 80s, I went twice in the 80s to Scotland. And because I, I knew that's where my origins came from supposedly, I felt like I was, you know, in some way going home to a place that I could be, even though it wasn't anything I knew about and I, you know, didn't know anybody. It felt, it felt, it felt good to me.
Sarah, how has it changed your everyday life? Or has it?
How has it changed my everyday life? I don't, I think it has. Well, it, so the MacArthur clan were fighters. They, we, they were slightly rougher around the edges than other more ruling class clans. And I, and that has always, I've always held on to that as a way that, that I was supposed to fight for things. I was supposed to be a protector. I, you know, that's, that was organic to, to me, that I was able to do things. And, and I was strong. So, it's just, for me, every day I try and do that. And there's some part of it that says, and you're supposed to do that. You're supposed to work hard to do that.
And are there parts of, of things that you do that are cultural?
Parts that I do that are cultural? Other than incorporating Scottish emblemism and plaids and things like that?
Well, that's something that older people in your family do.
Oh, I do it as well. I have a kilt in my closet.
But call that because of a death in the family or something like that?
Right. Right. So, perhaps not. Perhaps there isn't something that, because I sort of asked, you asked that question and I get a big question mark over my head. So, that's part of, that's perhaps part of losing, losing it in being white and losing it in being distant from that.
Anybody else?
This is Tanya. Sorry, I'll turn off video. And obviously, as an immigrant, it's almost like coming to this country kind of started to emphasize my culture. And I didn't really think about being Irish prior to that. Although, I do think that in the wake of going through that experience and actually wanting to hold on what was Irish in me coming to this country, I realized how stunted my experience of culture had been as a Protestant in the North, and how much had been told and glorified to me about the Great British Empire. And the fact that I had lost a language because of that. And certainly trying to hold on to the language and the idioms of my culture has made me very conscious, especially when I write. And I, and I think too, when I trace the whole way back, well, I was part of, you know, my family as a history was part of a colonization of Britain to begin with. So, it's very, very mixed in how your culture is linked to your landscape is another thing that came to mind when you asked that question. And then, what truly is my culture here? And what do I attach to here in America? And I, I will say that one of the great shocks, and I've been somewhat of a dilemma to me, that in, in the records, and in fact, we have a deeper history that we were able to present to this museum. There's a place called Brattonsville. Bratton is my maiden name. And Colonel William Bratton had owned the most enslaved people in South Carolina at one stage. So, here I am as an immigrant, come into a country to, you know, find a family history that was rooted in something that is appalling to me. But in some ways too, it was neat to know that history. It's, it's kind of a weighing of it. There you go.
Thank you.
Very mixed bag.
I see a hand up.
Tanya made me, feel free to speak now. I am originally from Serbia, from Europe. And we were not colonizers. We were always colonized. We were always occupied. There was always somebody coming because we were positioned in such a, like a crossroad of Europe, that this is what we were called. And so, there was like 500 years of Turkish occupation. And then, First World War and Balkans Wars and Second World War. And, and of course, I'm after the war, Second World War generation. But anyway, we were kind of like always feeling on the side of the people who were slaves, who were, you know. And I'm afraid that what with the word slave, there is another term that comes to mind, which is unslay. You, you become kind of enslaved. You become, you become kind of like feeling that, okay, this is what I deserve. I deserve to, for somebody to kind of hit me in the head to make me say what I need to do. And I'm waiting. And this is what I see even politically now in my country, that people are kind of feeling more comfortable when they're ordered what to do, when they're said. And of course, we lived under the, what you would call a dictator, not a dictator, I don't know what, soft dictator. I don't know how to call President Tito, that was our president for 50, 60, 40, I don't know how many years. He died in 1980. And after 1980, everything fell down, you know, as if he was holding the, you know, the hole from which the water was going to pour if he moves his finger. So, anyway, everything fell apart. So, this is how I feel. And, and coming to America, and I've been here for a very long time. I came in 1986. I see this country. This was my, I always wanted to come here. And, and I'm kind of Anglophile a little bit, always like the, the culture and, and the everything that comes with this. And so, when we came in 1986, our country fell apart. So, I didn't have country to go back to. So, my country that once was called Yugoslavia didn't exist anymore. And we were all supposed to be called something else. And we were all supposed to now hate each other. And we were all supposed to fight with each other, which was completely foreign to me. And I was glad to come, to be here and when this was all happening, not glad because it was happening, but glad because I was not there, you know. So, and now, looking at what is going on over here, and it is kind of like, oh my God, where am I? You know, am I going to experience similar things? Or, you know, so there is a fear in me. But I just wanted to, to say, to talk about this enslaved mind, that I think is something that people are trapped in. And I think my people are trapped in. And I think after reading, of course, Between the World and Me, which opened my mind completely. You know, that, that book was like a Bible to me. And that's it. Little short history of my feeling as an immigrant and as an enslaved person.
And this is Tanya again. If I could just underscore that, I think that's one of my greatest fears at the moment, similar to Yelena, is coming from Northern Ireland and leaving that country specifically because of bigotry. And I'm, I'm, I'm fearful of the violence that may erupt. I'll just put a point blank out there, the violence that might erupt after the election.
That's right. Yeah.
Cindy, we have two hands up. Sarah Weinshekker and Madeline. Okay. Sarah, did you want to speak?
Sorry, were you, were you saying Karen?
Nope, Sarah. Sarah Weinshekker.
Sorry.
And no, they put their hands down. Okay, go ahead Cindy.
Both people put their hands down?
Yes.
Okay. All right. So, I think that, Karen, did you have your hand up?
Yes.
Okay, go ahead.
Okay, yeah, I just wanted to go sort of piggyback on to what, who was the person that was just talking about coming from Yugoslavia? Yes. And I did my homework this weekend by looking at the video that you told us to look at about whiteness. And then, connected to that, there was a picture below of the same fellow doing something on Foucault, Michael Foucault, a French philosopher. And I listened to that for 25 minutes. And who was talking exactly about what? Who was, what's the person's name?
From?
Yelena?
Elena?
Yelena, yes.
Okay, thank you. Elena, about, from, is it Discipline and Punishment, I guess? Where he says that the whole structure of the society, looking at the prison systems in Europe and the structure of that, they, it was done in such a way that the prisoners themselves are feeling that that's what they deserve. This is way, this is who they are and what they live. And that he proposes that this structure is put into the regular school systems and into all kinds of other systems in society that causes people to feel exactly what Elena was just talking about. And what I love, obviously, is to have become, to have been aware, made aware of what Montessori does for people, because it's the contrast to that. It brings people to know themselves and to be able to see that things like that can happen and that you can be outside of it. You don't have to be caught in it. It, it doesn't victimize you. It gives you agency instead. So, anyway, it was just fascinating to hear that. And if we can, again, become aware of it and start changing it, that would be great.
Thank you Karen. Anyone else that want to talk about their background? And, oh, I see some hands.
Carolyn went up. Carolyn Kembich.
Yes. My background is Scandinavian. My father was born in Sweden. My mother's family came from Finland, but she and her couple of younger siblings were born in the States, in Michigan. And I just remember my father's Swedish saying was, "Live and let live." And he may not necessarily agree with something somebody was saying, but he felt they had the right to say it and to be. And I don't know about colonialism in Sweden. I don't think there was any. I didn't, I haven't studied Swedish history, but I think of them as more peaceful people at this point in time. I don't know about the, going back to the Vikings, but I think more in terms of peace when I think of our, of a Scandinavian culture. I think with the Finnish education, I think they seem to have a balance between education and physical movement and recreation. And so, I think, that, I think, makes sense to me. It reminds me of the farm school in Montessori, where it's not all academic, but it's also physical. So, so when I think about my heritage, I was brought up in America, in a working-class family. We, we had small means, but I felt we had great dignity in hard work. And my mother would say, "We may not have a lot of money, but we give our best, we do our best, and nobody can take our character away from us." So, that was the orientation with which I was brought up.
Gotcha. Carolyn, if you were to look up some history about Sweden, you would probably find that the Swedes colonized in the late 1600s, 1700s and the early 1800s due to tobacco and fur trade. So, they, they actually have quite a, quite a history of colonization.
Who did they colonize?
Af- Africa, America and some other country that I can't think of off the top of my head. I know that there were three.
And then, what happened? Did they?
Pardon?
I said, and then what happened? Did they leave? Did they get kicked out? Did they say?
They got kicked out.
They got kicked out?
And as, as all of those stories tended to go.
All right. As I said, I haven't studied the past history.
There, you know, worldwide, there tends to be a history of, "Who can I dominate?"
Yes.
And, and that is the piece. To me, it is one of the greatest things that in a Montessori environment, especially from the preschool level up, we have the ability to, to teach children about. And that, I always connect that to one's ability to have one's own space, to claim that space, for people to honor that space. All of that, to me, is very, very akin to teaching a child the importance of not dominating another person, not, not taking their space, not taking who they are, not taking their, their oral space, not dominating by the, the sound that you permeate in the classroom, not dominating somebody else's oral space apart from the physical space. But to me, that, that is so connected to the information that Montessori presented. And, and that, not all of us have drawn that conclusion, but that is so the underpinnings of colonization and slavery. Yes.
Yes. After, after our last session, I was reading about slavery, because I sparked my interest. And this idea of dominance was very interesting, because it seemed that it wasn't just black people that were enslaved. It was all kinds of people all over, and it kept switching around who was dominating who. But I think the word dominating was the one that stuck out in my mind. And it's like, how do we move from that domination to more of a collaborative, cooperative kind of environment?
Yeah, as we've talked about, as far as America was concerned, it was Irish and it was indigenous people. And then Africans, and Africans became the nugget. It's, it's the ones that they said, okay, we get more out of them. They're giving us less pushback. They have more to offer that we need in order to make America what we want it to be. And so, let's, let's really go after the people in Africa. But, but that idea of taking over and dominating people was a terrible disease that was worldwide.
Now, Flee.
Um, that really fascinates me Cindy. And I want to have, can share with us why you think, or maybe there were things in place already, that they got less pushback from the African people.
You know, I, I could surmise. I think that it was a combination of things. When, when Africans were enslaved, they were taken en masse. And so, there were large groups of people who were taking all at one time. And they were taken to another continent. It wasn't like they could just run and run to another village to be able to escape. And the people who were connected to their tribe or other people that they knew were also a part of it. So, it was, it was farther to be able to go. It was, it was, they were in a land where they had, they didn't have the language that was being spoken there. So, it wasn't so easy to be able to, to sort out who to get help from. so it wasn't so easy to be able to...to sort out who to get help from and...and who...who to ask for...for assistance to be able to get back. So, and I think they knew that.
Yeah.
You know, it's...it's...it's very similar to the situation that people are in right now who either are children who have been taken at the border or parents who have children. It's like, they don't really know who...who's the safe person to ask. They don't necessarily want to leave here without their children, but they also don't quite know how to find their children. You know, it's like, and...and I think that it was a situation much more exacerbated when it comes to Africa.
The other question I had, if I can, is I was fascinated by your telling us the story, and I can't say it well enough because the people weren't here last week, but that the word Caucasian came from a beautiful skull when you were going through that part of the history. And I'm just wondering if that skull had never been found? If...if we would be in a different place? But it's...human nature being what it is, we wouldn't.
Well, the...the name came from where the skull was found, from the Caucasus Mountains. And...and the person who...who was collecting skulls at the time felt that it was the most beautiful of the ones that he...he had been receiving. And they were given to him as gifts. And so it was a part of his scientific work to analyze them. And so he...he took a fancy to that particular skull. Yeah, interesting. Yeah, and who knows? Who knows? It...it may have simply just been another name, but the desire to have someone in science validate that a group of people as being better than another was really where the intent was. And so the intent would have occurred no matter what. The name may have just been different.
Yeah, thank you.
Sure. So I want to share a little bit more, and then I'm going to have Jonathan Wolfe share a little bit of some research that I had him do. Because a part of what has also come up for people that has made that white is better consideration is the concept of someone having blue eyes, blonde hair, and that...that...that is where people want to get to. There is a video that I was going to show you that comes from Japan about a...a commercial that they were airing for quite some time until they started to get some pushback about it, where they show Japanese women and they show them browner or whiter. And it's to advertise a whitening cream, and it says that it is so much better to have white skin. And so it continues to show...show these models and show them as being whitening their skin and that being much better for them than not. And there was this period of time, some people may know that, when...when contact lenses started to come out in different colors and people then started to want to change up the color of their eye, and here was the way to be able to do that, and you could actually make people think that that was your eye color. After a while, they'd forget if you wore them long enough, was the saying that went on. But when you look back into science history, what you discover is that the original eyes were brown. And so I'm going to read you a little bit of information. It says, "A team of scientists have tracked down the genetic mutation that leads to blue eyes. The mutation occurred between 6,000 and 10,000 years ago. Before then, there were no blue eyes. Originally, we all had brown eyes," says Hans Eiberg from the Department of Cellular and Molecular Medicine at the University of Copenhagen. "The mutation affected the so-called OCA2 gene," in case you want to look that up, "which is involved in the production of melanin, the pigment that gives color to our hair, our eyes, and our skin. A genetic mutation affecting the OCA2 gene in our chromosomes resulted in the creation of a switch which literally turned off the ability for some bodies to produce brown eyes." And that is how they came about. So the usage of white people or a white race for a large group of mainly or exclusively European populations were defined by their skin color and by their eye color, so that the blue eyes became the better one. And I have to say, John has cute blue eyes, so I'm not... I'm knocking your blue eyes. But it wasn't the origin. That isn't...that isn't the origin. And in fact, John, can you share your information about the origins of some other things?
I can. I think, Sarah, do you have that three...three slide slideshow? I assume you have this. I'm assuming you're talking about the African origin of humans?
Yeah.
Sarah may still have that. So, you know, the irony of this ridiculousness of race being a social construct, it flies so in the face of actual paleo-anthropological research. So, and most of us know this, you can go to that second slide there, Sarah. So, just, I'll read this to you, but you can follow along. "The African origin of modern human beings, also called the 'Out of Africa' theory, is the dominant model of the geographic origin and early migration of anatomically modern human beings, Homo sapiens. It follows the early expansions of hominins, homin...it's not a hominin', hominins out of Africa, accomplished by Homo erectus and then Homo neanderthalensis. Homo sapiens most likely developed in the Horn of Africa between 300,000 and 200,000 years ago. The African origin model proposes that all modern non-African populations, of which we are all a part, are substantially descended from populations of Homo sapiens that left Africa after that time." And to further cement this, of course, and some of you know this next slide, is they've been able to track what they call the mitochondrial Eve all the way back. So in human genetics, the mitochondrial Eve is the matrilineal most recent common ancestor of all living humans. In other words, she is defined as the most recent woman from whom all living humans descend in an unbroken line purely through their mothers and through the mothers of those mothers, back until all lines converge on one woman. As of 2013, estimates of when mitochondrial Eve lived suggest approximately 150,000 years ago. And this is an actual reconstruction of what they suggest she looked like. So again, the disconnect between science, that we are all basically the same DNA as human beings, and that started in Africa, and this whole myth of white being a race and a black being a, you know, different colored people actually being, you know, substantially different, it's so out of sync with everything that has been substantiated by science for so many years, and yet the myth continues to ripple out and cause inequities. Any questions, any thoughts? Most of you know that research, I'm sure. Yeah?
Melissa?
Yeah, I just wanted to pull this out. I don't know if anyone's seen this, it's like a 20-minute DVD, I don't know. It was given to me by Bio Interactive, have you heard of it? Anyways, it kind of really nicely talks about what you're talking about, but I think it's intended probably for a middle, like an early adolescent, maybe an upper elementary, but I...I don't know. Definitely for like early adolescent, possibly, you know, or an adolescent. I think that if you go to Bio Interactive, there's a website or a YouTube channel, and they actually have a lot of really great stuff, but they did such a great job of talking about exactly what you're talking about right now.
How did that hit people, what Jonathan was sharing?
I had heard on the, I think it was on the African-American Smithsonian Museum, that there was only one race, humanoid. And I thought they had an article on that, that they kept posted there.
Well, and the other...the other question, I'd like to tack on to Cindy's question, not to...not to divert from Cindy's question, is given what, you know, I just shared there, what more can we do at every program level to have students start to be aware of that fact? We are human beings and that we came from this one...one source, this one place that happened to be Africa. I think we need to find ways, if we're not already doing that, to build that into our cultural experiences with students. I mean, I just had a wild thought of, you know, asking students, whether it's elementary or secondary, what did the first mother look like? Because, you know, so often in Christianity or Judeo-Christianity, it's portrayed as the white Eve without him. It's like, no.
Only in this country, John.
Yeah, that's true. Yeah, but we're doing our work in this country, Tanya, so this is where the delusion is.
Actually, that's...that's something that we discuss at our school a lot, being that we're a Catholic school, I mean, we're Catholic. And so a lot of the art that does come, it does come from Europe. And the reality is, is that that's not what Jesus looks like. So we have some really great pictures of the apostles and...that do come before you had the Italian, the Renaissance, right? So anything that came before that, you're going to see a lot of those biblical figures that look a lot more...well, they look a lot more like they're Ethiopian, a modern-day Ethiopian. And so a lot of times, parents will ask, and I just assume that's a really great opportunity to teach, "Hey, this is really what Jesus looked like." I mean, we've got the Turin, and it...and there's some genetic samplings there, and so they've been able to trace it back, the genetics, which is something that's amazing to me because basically, Jesus was about a six-foot tall. And at that time, people really weren't that tall. And so could you imagine this person walking around who's six feet tall? To me, that's just, you know, I...I'm a short person anyways. I'm like, I'm...I...like my...my husband teases me because I really am very short. But six feet to me right now is huge, but I can only imagine what it would have been then.
Thanks Melissa.
I don't know if anybody else is waiting? Is anybody else waiting to speak?
I see Monica with her hand up.
Okay. Jonathan, can...is there a way that you can share that photo again? Because I want to just express my initial feelings when I saw...
Can you actually bring it up on the screen?
Yeah.
Sarah, can you bring the photo up again?
Can you bring that, like, you're talking about mitochondrial Eve?
Yeah.
Yeah. Sarah, if you would pop it back up, that would be cool.
So maybe this is just the way my brain thinks, but I'm sure that many of you have had the experience where maybe there's a family member in your lineage, and maybe you've seen a picture of that person, and somebody will say like, "Wow, you just look...you look just like, you know, your great aunt, you know, Molly, or you remind me so much of my great-great Aunt Flora." So I was at my in-law's house, and I'd never been in my in-law's bedroom up until that point. And it was the first time I'd gone into the bedroom to get something from my mother-in-law, and there was a picture on the wall. And the woman in the picture looked just like one of my daughters. And I said, like, "Who's in that picture?" And she was like, "Oh, that's...that's my great-grandmother." And so I say all of that to say this, when I look at mitochondrial Eve, like, if we think about lineages and the human family, like, it's really powerful to think that we're related to this woman. And then I start thinking with my heart, like, I wonder what parts of her are in me? And I wonder what parts of her are in others? And I know that this is like a reconstruction, so then I'm like, all right, where's the reconstruction? Like, I want to see it, like, I want to see what they think her eyes looked like. And this looks like a drawing, sort of, I'm sure they've done it like with maybe like technology, like piece it together based on the structure of her face, but it's just like, I want to touch her, like, I want to see her and touch her because, like, if that's where we came from, and the human family is...is down the line, like, I wonder...I wonder if she thought things like I think right now, you know?
It would be interesting, I...I love that idea, Monica. It would be interesting to put that picture, you know, that we always have those units where we're studying, doing our self-portraits, et cetera, and we tell our story in the various age levels. It would be interesting to post the picture of mitochondrial Eve, my mother.
Like, I want to see, like, I want to see how they reconstructed it because I want to make sure it's as authentic as possible, right?
Yeah.
But it's just so powerful to me, like, I wish I...
It would be interesting to...it would be interesting to give it to the children and say, "Write this mother's story before you even introduce mitochondrial Eve."
The other activity I thought of, you're generating activity ideas in my head, is have students draw, "What do you think the world's first mother looked like?" And have them do their own illustrations and then show, well, this is what science suggests that the first mother looked like, so they can actually, you know, compare their own perceptions. And maybe with older kids, have a discussion, "Why did you draw the picture the way you drew it? What led you to that conception?"
Thank you, Sarah, for sharing that. And thank you, Monica, for your...your comments around that. I'm curious how other people felt. I...I doubt I can recall on even one finger a conversation that I have ever, ever had with a white friend in which I said, "Who's in your..." well, I wouldn't answer that question, but where they've discussed where they come from and their ancestors. I've never heard anybody say, "Virginia, Nevada." So I'm curious if there was anyone who...that caught them up for a moment. And while you're thinking about it, I will tell you that I specifically asked Jonathan to present that part because he's white, and I didn't give him the information. I just asked him to research the origins of human beings and see where he came. Because I knew that if he did his work, that's where...that's what he would find. And it's a part of the secret.
Karen?
I...I wonder, I think that the younger generation probably has more of that antipathy because of all of the Nova specials and because of a lot of the new sciences, you know, with the ancestry dot-coms and the 23andMe and people going back in history. And it's interesting because in the last, what, 15, 20 years or so, that's where we've become knowledgeable that that's where we came from. So maybe in the...my generation, it was a surprise 10 or 15, 20 years ago or something like that for many people. But I think that the younger people these days sort of know that.
Karen, I would almost guess that the majority of even the younger people picture someone white in Africa. Wait, you're...you want to unmute yourself?
That's it, we need to change that.
Cindy, would you...would you think that Montessori children think that?
Oh, absolutely. Absolutely. Because there are many...I don't know that there are many Montessori children who even know that. I see, I have seen often in many schools, sometimes I see the map with strings coming from where someone has come from and then to the face of the child. But Africa isn't where any strings are going to unless it's a child of color. And there's also the...the assumption given because sometimes I have asked teachers before, "Did that child come from Africa? Or did that child come from another country, but they're black? And do you really know what their origins are?" So I...I would say that this is in the area of work that we have.
Patricia, you had a thought?
Yeah, what this made me think about is that all the many...
Yeah, and what, and this made me think about is that all the many timelines that we have in the elementary classrooms, and how we focus on the, like, the timeline of humans, it's all focused on achievements, right? Like, you see the picture of the early man with fire and this and that. But it seems to me that this would be a beautiful material that could be developed where you start with the African continent and show not only where people travel, but then how their skin changed based on exposure to the sun and being above or below the equator, so that the humans don't end up, they look the same, they're just doing different things as they progress, you know, in the way that most of these timelines that I've seen are depicted. So it would be lovely for someone to, to develop that, you know, that timeline and that perspective for children. Because I agree with you. I think if you were to look at it carefully, most of them would not put their origin back in Africa.
Anyone else ever thought about that? I mean, imagine what that would look like if everyone's place of origin started there. Imagine the message that you're giving to children, not only are you friends, but you're family. Mike has his hand up.
Uh, you're muted, Mike.
Uh, yes. So I, I, I was just thinking just now, it's, it's not relevant because this fact, or these facts, whether they're disputed or, 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 you know, kind of being looked at, this fact about, um, Eve. I, i- it's not relevant because any race or any ethnicity can say, yo, look, you know, all life stemmed from, that's, it's not relevant for that reason. That doesn't really matter. It's relevant because it's beautiful that we all came from the same place. It's beautiful that we are all related. I mean, when you first opened up, Cindy, you mentioned how, you know, where did you come from, you know, what, what's your lineage? And some of us know, some of us tracked. We, we, you know, so, some from Scandinavia, Ireland, India. We, we know, and then obviously it drops off, because, you know, prehistoric, nobody was, nobody was, um, counting, nobody was documenting it. But with this kind of information, we know that we've come from the same place, and that's what's relevant. I think sometimes when this conversation does come up, there's the fear of, um, one race lording it over another. Oh, you came from me, you know? No, that's, that's not what it is. It's beautiful that we all come from, we, we share kinship, you know? And, um, that's, that's a beautiful thing. I, you guys, I've mentioned before, you know, I was, I was born in the Midlands in, in England, right? My parents are from Antigua and Barbuda in the West Indies. My lineage, uh, I would say great-great-grandmother was full Portuguese. Um, Georgie, uh, her name was Georgina Cuchara. And beyond that, when I did the 23andMe, or my sister did the 23andMe, it's just a cocktail. I mean, I was, I was confused after that. There's Azkabani Jew in there. There's, um, there's literally some European, there's some African. You know, we're just mixed up if you go back. And, um, I, I don't wanna, I don't wanna have a kumbaya moment here. It's not like, you know, I don't wanna, I'd like to, you know, it's, it's just a fact that we are all from the same place. And, um, I'm, I'm of the mind, just hearing these things, that race is humanity. You know, there are ethnic differences, but the race is humanity, you know, the race is humanity. That's the race. That's it.
Well, Michael, I want, I wanna piggyback on that, because I, you, for me, you said something really profound and moving, which is, and, and Sarah, could you bring mitochondrial Eve back up one more time? I, I just had a really pretty powerful thought, at least from my little brain. It's, what, Michael, if I'm tracking Michael, right, you know, it's not about, see, the first woman was black, the first mother was black. It's really helping students person, have a personal human experience of mitochondrial Eve. So I'm thinking of, like, having students begin to talk about, what do you think she is thinking right now? Describe her. What do you think she'd be doing today? So it's humanizing mitochondrial Eve. So it's not just about the fact that she, you know, came from Africa and had a dark skin. It's, we've gotta, we've gotta create a universal humanity around this. Otherwise, children will walk away and become adults thinking, okay, so the first mother was black. That's not the point. The point is the universality of humanity, which I think is where Michael was going. Thanks, Sarah.
And traits are inherited, Jonathan, then it's like, what traits did we all inherit from her? Like, that's where my heart was. It's like, you know, my mother used to say, oh, your grandmother loves Swiss cheese on Triscuits, right? So that's like a very specific thing. So when I was looking at her face, I was thinking to myself, like, what trait?
Yeah. It's gotta be person wise.
Have I inherited from her? Beautiful.
It also says, to hurt you is to hurt me.
Me, yeah.
You know, and, and that's the piece that people have been missing. To dominate you is to dominate me. To mistreat you is to mistreat me. To bully you is to bully me. And that, that's the connection that we have to end up bringing children to. And that, you know, that's, that's so, so indicative of, of what happens in practical life, where we teach them care of a plant and things like that. To, to care for this helps you to understand what it means to care for a human being. Well, to understand this piece is a piece that will help you to treat, to treat me well and treat you well, because to treat you well is to treat me well, and vice versa.
Cindy, Mario asks a very beautiful question. He would like to know, what are some suggestions on how to build this work into our primary classrooms?
Hmm. Um, I think one of them, um, is throughout, throughout all of the information that has to do with the globe-to-the-map work. And as we start to help children to understand where the animals came from and where the people came from, that we start with that connection of where human beings came from. And that we draw out, um, from there. I think that that's a piece that is really critical. Um, I have also said to all schools that I believe that, um, that they should, for one year, pull, um, the literature that has, that has children who are white, and infuse your curriculum with literature that is only people of color, so that you can catch up. It's not to divorce people who are white, it's to catch up with the information that children have not had before. And to, to draw the connection between familiarity as being familial. To say, we, we came from the same source. We're not just friends, we're also family. And so we wanna treat each other like family. And what that, what that means. And to ask is, is that, is that treating each other as family? What, what would that look like? And, and reworking the concept of people of the world and what they look like in each continent, because they don't, not anymore. Um, they don't. And so children need to be able to see that there are all different kinds of people in many different continents. And that we, we need to make sure that we've connected the culture and ethnicity of all of the children in our classroom. Because to simply teach the continents is not to have that child understand who they are in relation to their own, um, initial heritage. Because as, as we mentioned, that was a casualty for white people. And it was a, a horrible situation that was given to people who were black. So either way, any child who comes into your, your, your classroom may be missing an important part of who they are and who their family was, and so may their parents. You know, some of that is helping parents to be able to discover what their heritage was, and to be able to, to own that and to have that, you know? I, I, I have several Latinx families in my school who feel like they have to give up Spanish, or they have to give up the customs that they, they have had in, in their household. Um, and I have said, please, please don't do that. Please allow us to help you to regain that. Our students, I just reminded them, they went to the beach, um, my older elementary students, and I said, please remember, um, before you leave. And they said, we know that we acknowledge the indigenous people who were here and made this land possible. So I said, okay, you got, you got it. Um, but it's things like that, um, that we need to be able to do, and we have to know that from ourselves. It's like, as soon as you step into your school, you're stepping on property that belonged to some, some indigenous group that was not white and was not African either. And, and you need to acknowledge them, and you need to acknowledge what happened. What was the, what was the unfortunate situation that ended up in you being able to step foot on that space? I think Mike has his hand up.
Yes. Um, Cindy, what, what does your Dutch heritage look like? How far back does that go? And what does it look like?
To the people who built the slave ships.
Oh, really? Okay.
Yep. 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 To the Dutch people who built the slave ships, and then who ended up raping Africans and having children.
So they were among those people?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Mm-hmm. Yeah. And then my, my African heritage is the Mendee tribe of Sierra Leone. And they fought through the, through the courts, the ability for Sierra Leonians to be able to return back to Africa legally.
Abastad?
Oh, I don't know if you guys, I've missed several weeks. Um, so I don't know if you guys had, um, discussed, or if anybody put it out, the resource out there. But there is a phone number that you can text, and you, they will let you know what indigenous people's land you're living and working on. Have you guys brought that up in the conversations?
We haven't.
So, yeah, I just, I was in a training last week, um, together for Families Training. It's a national, um, family support worker conference. And that's the first thing they had us do at the beginning of the conference, was to, um, text our zip code to the phone number to find out where, whose land we were working or living on. Um, and so I can put that in the chat. And it was really neat, because then I actually posted it on my Facebook, and then my family was doing it to see, I have family in New York and things like that, and they were checking to see whose land they were living and working on as well.
Nice. Yeah, I have, um, I was gonna say, I think it's behind me. Um, I have a piece that we use for our school that is called Native People of the East Bay. And it's a curriculum written by indigenous, indigenous people. And one of the first things that I do with our students, the first sentence says, "The first non-Indians to intrude on the lives of local native peoples did so by sea in 1542." And, and then I ask them, what does the word "intrude" mean? And then I, I allow them to present intrusion. And so they go through different aspects of what they think it means to intrude. And then I, I ended up, I went through that this past week, and I intruded on a child's space by scooting them off their chair. And once I did that, they got that. They got that, that that was intruding. Um, and so we sort of come from that place of making sure that children understand what it means to dominate, what it means to intrude. Because those are things that we, we've had too much of in our history. And, and because we want them to change that, then they have to understand what it is and what it feels like. Any other thoughts somebody has?
I, I was just thinking about going back to the origin of people. And the thought of a kaleidoscope came into my mind as I was thinking, okay, how did we get all this mixture of people? And, and I know a lot of it is the geography. But I, I think that aspect was just interesting, because you look at different patterns. Patterns are beautiful, they change. And just knowing that evolution, I guess you would see, uh, of human beings into different places and shapes and forms, and still being human beings. Because I think when we look at our history, we're looking at a short history, not to the beginning. And, uh, to see that whole big, it reminds me of these videos where you see different things moving around and, and evolving into things as, as they're developing and spreading around the earth. Just random thoughts going through my creative brain there.
Yeah, some of it was definitely people and change and migration. Some of it was rape. Some of it was people who, um, who actually deeply fell in love with someone who was another color and had children. There, there was, and probably, a lot, probably a lot of people don't know this, that there was a, 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 I don't know if it was a state, it was a part of a state, um, in New York, where many, many years ago, um, people, it welcomed people who were biracial couples, who were gay, anything that was out of the norm, and they lived there. And this was at a time when, um, it was illegal to marry someone of a different race. And it was right after, um, African-Americans were allowed to be in the military, and women were allowed to serve as nurses. And so there was a woman who was a black nurse. There's a book about her. And she, she encountered, because she had to care for, um, a German POW. Because, um, the military didn't really want to have black people in it, and they definitely didn't want to have women. And so they had the black women care for the soldiers of war. And so she met and fell in love with a German soldier of war, and they, um, eventually got married and continued to move back and forth from America to Europe, to America to Europe. And every time they were discriminated against, they'd move again, um, until they ended up in this little spot in some part of New York, where they lived their lives out without anyone, um, causing any harm to them, because everybody was different. And they all chose to be there because they could be there freely.
Cindy, in the same genre, there's this wonderful movie with Matthew McConaughey of The Free State of Jones, which is this historical story of a small group of, of ex-slaves and, and, and Southerners who didn't wanna keep supporting right after the Civil War, at the end of the war, support the rich plantation of the Indians, who didn't wanna give up power. And they formed their own free state in Mississippi. And the head of that, played by Matthew McConaughey, eventually married an ex-slave, and, and the story continues from there. It's a beautiful story, called The Free Jones.
Yeah, what it took back then for people to, um, to end up being together, I think, was just quite something. Because, um, you, you could get jailed or killed. So I wanna read a little part to you. How much time do we have? Okay. And then Sarah, if you can share the other video. It says, "We have been racialized before we have been allowed access to our own ethnic identities." This is what has happened with a lot of African immigrants. And this is also what has happened with white people who live in America. If you're, if you're black, you could be Senegalese, or Kenyan, or Nigeria, you come to the US and you're black. If you're white, you could be, um, Italian, um, or Yugoslavian, and you come over to the US and you're white. And you lose, um, your ethnicity. If you look more deeply, you are more than your race. If you look at your own heritage, you get to the multiculturalness of what is now considered white. Irish is not the same as Italian, is not the same as French, is not the same as Portuguese. And if one thinks about it, there is a certain tenderness, a connection, in bringing one's in bringing one's ancestors to the fore, which may just allow us to see in other people more than their color. But an understanding and appreciation that we have all come from a long lineage. I thought, that's really where it is. That's really what it's about. There were two people who had their hand up, and I think I missed them. Melissa, were you one of them?
Hey, yes. Um, sorry, I was actually just typing it into the chat, but I'll go ahead and ask, because that's way quicker than me typing. There was two things that I watched this week. And I wasn't sure if anyone's discussed either one, because they both came out, or I think came out this week. One was with Maps. They did a screening of Black Boys. Has anyone discussed or had a reaction to that film? No? You know, the Montessori adolescent professionals, something, I don't know, MAPS?
I know of it, yes.
Yeah, they had a, um, three-day conference, Friday, Saturday, and Sunday. I couldn't watch it, so I'm like catching up. So on Tuesdays.
Is Black Boys the one about the, the study about black boys in school?
Partly. It's talking a lot about how black boys are on like a lower, like they're, they're getting less than anybody else in education and even when, when they graduate and they're looking for jobs, when, you know, they're aspiring to be somebody when they're, when they get older. It always seems to not be at that same cat, like caliber as any other race.
They're the most discriminated against.
Yes, thank you. And then the second thing that I watched on Netflix, there is a five-episode series called Social Distance. I don't know if anyone's seen it. It's okay. I'm not necessarily recommending it. But the last episode was specifically about what had happened with, back in Memorial Day weekend. I'm sorry, it's Friday and my head hurts. But all, everything that was going on with the resurgence of that activity and passion and movement with Black Lives Matter. Well, there was the dialogue in this last episode between a younger generation black male and an older generation black male, and how far away they were on their perspectives. And I was just wondering, in, has any of this been discussed? I, I'm so sorry, I like not hear usually on Friday evenings, because I, I'm ready to go home. But, and I do wish I spent more time on these, on these web, or calls. But anyways, is this something that you guys are discussing?
Stay, because we're gonna review with everybody when's the best day in time, so.
Okay. Has anyone seen it or had any thoughts on it? Have you seen a big disparity in the black community between the younger and the older generations?
Have I?
Yeah, or anybody?
Well, let's see if anybody wants to comment before I comment. So disparity in their perspective about things, is that what you mean?
Yeah. Where, so in that show, and you really have to watch it, because I'm just gonna do, oh, you know, I'm just gonna torture it. But in the show, the disparity was the elder of the two men was exhibiting gratitude. And he was like, "Look at everything that I have because of the men before me. I have my, a black-owned business. I am, you know, I, I'm able to employ other black men. I can, you know, take my business and I can serve a whole community regardless of race. And I'm doing all of these things to promote my community." And then the younger black man was like, you know, full of angst, let's say, and just was like, "You need to be angry, not grateful." And so there was this real clash between the two of them. And I don't know if you're seeing that in the community, because that was the first I've seen it. And of course, it's in film, so I'm not sure how much of that is true. I'm just asking, do you see that disparity between an older generation black man who is grateful and a younger one who's full of angst and feels that everybody should be angry?
You know, I, I see, I don't know how much of it is age-related. I do see situations that characterize people very differently. Because, because black men whom I have seen constantly get into trouble. And, and I mean, just targeted and get into trouble, who, from childhood on. You know, there, there are some, some, some black boys who, who live black. And because they're living black people, people look at them and they have had experiences in their lives in which, in which at school, they were always the ones who got into trouble, but not, not reached, reached out to, to be able to try to support them or to see what their family situation is, or what their, what the situation is that they, they're trying to, they're trying to communicate through their actions, or what has preceded the actions. And those same boys eventually start to live into what it is that they've been experiencing. And those same young men who were those boys, who have become bitter and angry, you then see it reflected in how they are in the world. And I have seen other black, black boys who have not had that as their experience and who have moved through life differently. And so, so their, their take on life and their take on humanity has come from their experiences, which may not have been that experience. And it could be that those same black boy, that same black boy could end up still getting pulled over by the police. But they don't have the, the lived experience for decades in their bodies about what has happened to them. And, and either they don't have that experience, or they do have that experience and they don't end up with the same anger at that time, or the same response at that time. But they definitely then have it in their pocket that, wow, this is, this is an experience that does happen to black people because it happened to me.
Cindy, I've got a quick question. What does it mean for young black boys to come in and to live black? What does that mean?
It, it's, it's an expression that has come up recently. It's like, how, why did you get in trouble? I was biking while black. Why did the, the officer pull you over? Because I was driving while black. And so it's the black part that ended up causing the problem, not the actual action. But it's because you were black that this ended up happening. Thank you.
Cindy, I'd like to speak of an experience that I've had over the past few years. We have 100 black men of Savannah that come to school and mentor the children, the, the boys. And my experience of that has been somewhat mixed. Generally, I see it as a very positive experience. But generational, they are exposing ideals that sometimes I feel, it, it, it's almost perpetuating, you have to act in this way because that's what will, number one, probably protect you, although they don't talk about that. But this is how, this is how you can live into the white norm. Can I say that? That this is what's gonna help you function in a white world? Is, it's kind of how I see it. And I, and I'm wondering if maybe there's deeper discussions. Or maybe that's just a focus of, of the generational gap in that, you know, you're going to live this particular ideal because this is how I, as an older black man, have been able to make it in the world. And, but not. Just sometimes when, when I listen to the conversations or what's being proposed to our young black males, I don't think it's enough, I guess. Or maybe it doesn't take into account that our world has changed.
Has changed for the better, you mean?
How can I say? It's almost like a soft approach. And the, and the world, it, I mean, I, I, I almost feel like, should it be a forum where our, our boys can experience what these men actually went through? You know, the, the horrors and the difficulties? And, and also so that those chi, those children, those young boys, those young men can express how they're feeling in the world, rather than it being, you know, just about, this is how you need to speak to get a really good job. This is how you need to dress to get a really good job. This is how you need to interact with other people to get a really good job. And maybe I'm minimizing it, but I, I'm just, I just wonder, should, you know, I'm asking you as a black woman, are, are there other things that that mentoring program should be focusing on in this, you know, in this current climate?
Well, I'll, I'll answer it briefly, and then Mike had had his hand up. And so I'm wondering if Mike can also comment to a part of, of what you said. The, the 100 black men are, I mean, they're designed to try to lift up young black men who didn't have someone to be able to, to really support them as they needed to be supported as young black men growing up. And to also help young black men to, to see how they can be a contribution to society when the odds are against black men. So I'm guessing that what you're describing is that they're kind of attempting to have the talk, which is the talk that is needed to, to give to young black men to stay out of trouble, to, to be more acceptable in society. And, and I don't, I can't speak to how they do it. But, but I do think that sharing the experiences with young black men helps them to be more prepared. And not saying anything is probably one of the worst things that someone could do. Because the truth is that right now, out in the world, black, black men even more than black women are, are targeted, are targeted in school, they're targeted on the street. They're, they're targeted by family members who have young white children who are interested in dating them. I mean, they, they are a target. And they need, they need to be able to know how to operate in this world because of that. I, I can remember a day when I was sitting in the backseat and my children, my son was driving and my daughter was in the passenger seat. And we all thought that was really just wonderful, because usually I'm the person who's driving. And I said, you know, let me have, let me have a moment. And, and, and we got pulled over. And when we got pulled over, I could hear my daughter saying to my son, "Put your hands up on the dashboard and just, just don't say anything. Just let him talk, just don't, don't say anything. Let me try to say something." And I thought, oh my gosh, I'd never given him that conversation. But my daughter knew that conversation. And so she immediately just started to direct him as to how he needed to be. And then my daughter then said, "Good evening, officer, blah, 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 blah." And she went through this whole thing while I was sitting in the back, watching the whole thing, thinking, whoa. And whoa on many levels. One, that it was happening. Two, that my daughter was directing, immediately started to direct my son what to say. Three, that my son didn't have it, because I hadn't given that to him. And four, that an officer could actually end up mistreating my son. And I'm sitting in the backseat. So I, I believe that the work of 100 black men is to try to protect black young men. And that's where they come from. And could they do it differently? Maybe. But the work needs to be done. Mike, do you have a, you had the thought you were going to say, and do you have a thought about that?
Yeah, absolutely. Concerning the 100 black men, there were two things. I wanted to mention something about what Melissa said, but concerning the 100 black men, you know, my wife and I, Arlette, right here, we, we chose to have the talk with our son. So we had the talk with our son, and, you know, several times. And then he went off to college when he was 18. And he hasn't come home, you know, he's, he's, he's gone, he's living by himself now. And as the years have gone by, I speak to him, and I can see that he has had experiences already. I don't even know where they could have come from. He's not just running around bitter. We know our son, he's not, he's, he's, he's kind of, he's passive-aggressive and he's kind of right down the middle. And, you know, he, he's, he's not, how do I say without sounding strange? You, you wouldn't peg him as a kind of a, a street guy, not that if there's anything wrong, that there was. But he's already had these experiences. It's, it's affected his view, it's affected his political views. And he's not a lazy guy, and he's not, he's not anything that, anything that, he's not, he's not anything that's the typical, stereotypical quotation marks, you know, would be hanging around him. He's just trying to make his way. And already he's had some experiences. And that is with me telling him, behave a certain way, speak clearly, hold your head up, look people in the eye. If you ever get pulled over, you know, all these kinds of things. But, and this is kind of where it tears into what Melissa said. He, he, when I speak to him, he's, he's upset. And I can't just say he's just angry for no reason. He's college-educated, he's, but something's upsetting him in a dif, in a way that's different from me. I wouldn't, I don't react the way he's reacting. But I heard an analogy one time that, you know, the wolf for years has been coming down the hill and eating the sheep. That wolf being, I guess, the social construct of racism and, you know, being disenfranchised and being marginalized. For years, the wolf has been running down the hill and eating the sheep, and eating the sheep, and eating the sheep for millennia. Then one day the sheep get together and they say, you know what? This is enough. We're letting these guys come down the hill and eat the heck out of us. Let's, let's put a stop to this. And so they get together and they organize, I don't know what you, whatever social parallel you want to pull, Black Lives Matter or something. And then the, the sheep fights back. It's not normal, but the sheep fights back. And society raises its head and they see the sheep fighting back. And they say, "Look at those violent sheep. Look at them attacking these wolf. What's going on?" And, 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 and that's where I see these young boys. Society is raising their head at a time where it doesn't look like they're sheep, but they're sheep. Because society has been a wolf against them. And I say that to say this, because my son is an example for me. I don't know where the aggression comes from. He's not been beaten by the police. He's, he has a fair shake, but, and he's not given to listening to people just because they say something, you know? He has gone through something, he's experienced something, whether it's emotional, whether it's societal. He's gone through something. And it's, it's real. And that's what I think we see with the younger generation versus the old generation that may have had more of a sheep approach. We, we're seeing some aggressive sheep here, but it doesn't change the setup. That aggression inbound was, has been there for millennia and continues to some extent. That's all I wanted to mention.
Thank you. Hilda, and then Sarah, did you have something you were gonna share before we wind up? Hilda?
Yeah, I would like to say what he said was exactly right. And I feel like, you know, that is the spirit. Even those people who are hurting this generation, they are not even helpless. They don't even know what they are doing. Intentionally, the spirit is there. So somehow it is victimizing some, somebody and we are getting affected. All that we have to know is the world needs everyone. Every life matters. So respecting and honoring, I'm just really sorry for all the wound. But I'm pretty sure that the people who are even bothering them, they don't even know. They're just doing it. I don't know how the bad spirit is acting on them. That's how we are ending up in this kind of tragedy. That's what I feel.
Hilda, I think, I think many people know and other people aren't surprised because they weren't prepared for that. They have expected better of us as human beings. And that we've spent a lot of time assuming that surely this is not really what people are doing. And it really is what people are doing.
Like the wolf, I don't know. Yeah.
Yes, and so eyes wide open. We need to be able to see that. Hold your thoughts because we need to stop. And I want to end by showing you a material. It is a Montessori material. And this one is in Spanish. And it was purchased at the AMS conference and it's called Races del Mundo. Races of the World. And this is one of them. And can you see the word?
You can pull it, yeah, blanca.
Yes.
Amarillo.
Which means?
Negra. Amarilla is yellow, negra. West.
And one of my teachers brought it, well, actually Sarah brought it in to me. Because one of my teachers decided that she should pull it out. She bought it two years ago at an AMS conference. And we said, oh, no, 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 no. We're not going to use that in our environment. But what it was, it was helpful for me because there, there are just a lot of, there's a lot of work that we still need to do. And this was at a Montessori conference. And it's, it's not what we want. We want other materials for children. We don't want to perpetuate the same social construct of race. And so I say this to people who are heads of schools, know what's in your classrooms, know what teachers are sharing, know what the curriculum is, and create the curriculum that we need to be able to have. So we're gonna, yes.
We're gonna, are we ready to launch the poll or are you?
Yes, we are.
It's just we're running a little bit late and I want to make sure people have an opportunity to let us know the best time to meet and change if we're going to change. So I'll launch the poll now so, and then we can wrap up. The poll has three choices. Please mark your choice. It's on deciding whether to change our day and our time.
Oh, you're missing one that says leave it right where it is.
Um, ooh, that's well, I can end the poll and do a new one. If you answer no to all of them, we'll know you mean leave it where it is. How's that?
Is, I'm curious if people can just put in the chat, is earlier better for you? So separate from doing the, the survey, is earlier better for you?
That's a Isn't the first one what it is now, Fridays?
Three o'clock starts at three, Stephanie.
Oh, three, right, right.
Yeah, the question is, is it better for it to be later? We've had a number of teachers who have said it's right at dismissal time. And so they've had a hard time with it. So we've been trying to figure out, is there another date or time that works better for people? Or some teachers who say a Friday at three, I want to go home after. And so, so they don't want to stay. Okay, did everybody send something back to Tanya besides what you put in the chat?
No, we only have 11 respondents. If you, if you like it where it is, can you, can you mark no to all of them?
So were we just supposed to put what works for us or just one that's our preference?
One that's your preference. But if, if three o'clock on Friday is your preference, then mark no on all three.
Did you get more, Tanya?
Yep, we're up to 21 respondents out of 35.
Okay. Okay. Thank you, everybody. We're meeting at the next time, the same time next week. And then we'll let you know what we came up with. And so we will, we'll see you next week. And we will be post-election, is that correct? In America?
No.
No, we'll have one more week?
Yeah, October 30th. Sorry, Cindy. Sorry, one more week.
I don't want to get the election over quickly, but it's
Goodness. Okay, all right. Thank you so much. We will see you next week.
Thank you.
Bye, everybody.
Thank you.
Gosh, there is really still one more week. Good grief.
Can't be soon enough.
Truly.
There's a lot of fatigue going on on all fronts these days.
Yeah.
And the medical, the medical profession has written about it. It's, it's called caution fatigue.
Caution?
Yep, caution fatigue. I Googled COVID fatigue and it's caution fatigue. And it, it takes into account lots of different things. And what it's, why they called it caution is because of increase in insomnia, increase in overeating, increase of alcohol use is what the research is suggesting is happening. Whether they're stressed out because of the election or COVID or local issues or family issues, it's caution, caution. Look at what's causing some of your bad habits, I guess.
Interesting. Wow.
I just, again, this is Tanya, just, I'm, I'm, I guess the fear that I expressed about the violence, it's very real to me. I don't know if, you know, I keep thinking, is this just because of where I came from? Or is this something that other people are truly feeling?
It's, Tanya, thank you, Tanya. My husband was born and brought up in, in India and all over Europe and all over the world. He was a foreign service diplomat kid. And he is so frightened by what he thinks is possible that he's on like, and he's a typical, normal white guy. You know, I mean, there's really nothing he should be afraid of. He is so afraid that he is starting to exhibit, as my daughter says, isolation syndrome, where he is pulling back and protecting his, his folk, his people. So you are not alone.
No, not at all, not at all. I didn't, you're talking about post-election.
Post-election.
Yeah, no, no. I'm, I, I think that, that it is, it is going to show up as being so race-based that it's unbelievable. In Seattle, where my daughter lives, they are doing the same thing that people were doing when COVID first hit. And all, they're buying out stuff from the stores because they all want to hide in their homes and not come out right after the election. And so, oh, I think a lot of people are definitely feeling that and fearing it. I, I, I think in the White House, they're, not in the White House, but people in Washington, they are fearing it as well. And have
I just remember, I just remember the Oklahoma bombing and
Which was race-based.
Yeah, I watched, you know, and that being my first experience of, you know, something violent that was in the news, that was centered in America, that was grinded in America, that wasn't some foreign scenario coming in. I'm thinking to myself, yeah, America has thought that they were immune to this until this time. Now, this is obviously several years ago. And I can't, and then nine 11, I was thinking, okay, you know, now American, America is experiencing some of the things that other countries have experienced in the past. And I think of the whole, the troubles and, and civil rights that I grew up under. Obviously, it wasn't a black-white thing. It was a socioeconomic religious thing. And I just can't help but have that. It, it's almost like I'm going back into a post-traumatic stress kind of scenario where, okay, when's that bomb gonna blow? So I, again, I thank you for affirming that, that it's not just something that's grinded in my experiences, you know, as a child, that this is something other people are feeling.
No, it's why I have been making the moments of silence based on peace, calm. Because, because everyone is, many people, I would say, are fearing, are fearing what's going to happen.
Yeah. So, and I've always come from, you know, trying to reframe it with a message of hope. But it, it is kind of interesting in this day and age. It's, it's getting more difficult to reframe it.